Call the meeting order. Dr. Diggan, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Today, we're gonna have our student technology leaders lead us in the pledge.
Salute, pledge.
According to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Chair.
Here.
Dr. Bridges, Mr. Jester.
Here.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Here.
Ms. John.
Here.
Colonel Curtis.
Here.
We have some special recognitions for this evening?
Yes, we have a full list of special guests and special recognition. For item A, I'm gonna have Ms. Lynn Curtis approach the podium. This is kind of a surprise. I've been waiting. This is cool.
I'm going to invite two gentlemen. The surprise is not for me, more as it is their great doing, Mr. Kraus and Mr. Jones from Walmart. And they are going to tell you about our special surprise today.
Thank you. Well, good evening. We're excited to interrupt your board meeting, and we have a great surprise for everybody. For more than 50 years, Walmart has been helping students and teachers prepare for the back-to-school. By offering everyday low prices, great assortment, shopping experience that's quick and easy for everyone. But this year, Walmart, we wanted to do more. There are two elections actually taking place this year. Walmart asked customers to nominate their favorite teachers to be a commander and teacher. Walmart tallied the votes received from across the nation, the United States. And the 20 teachers who received the most votes are gonna be recognized as the elected commanders of the classroom. Walmart tallied the votes received from across the nation. We're here today because four of those top 20 elected commanders of the classroom teach right here in the Lawton area. Well, good evening. In 2015, they did a survey, and they figured average of $490 is spent by the average teacher in a classroom every year. So in recognition of their contribution, the teachers made this year, and every year, Walmart invited these teachers with a gift card for $490. They helped make up some of that difference, and then we also brought some gifts to the teachers. And then it should help them out hopefully throughout the year, kinda help supplement when they always, you know, spend out of their own pockets to help these children out. At this time, I'd like to invite the teachers, all four of them. So Christina Morris.
Ridgecrest Elementary.
Thank you. Okay. Nicole Tarpley. She's also from Ridgecrest. Erin Ballit Berry. As you can tell, she's from McArthur Middle School. And Tiffany Veal. And she's from right here at Central Middle School, so. Walmart wants to thank you all, and on behalf of Walmart, we'd like to make the difference in the children's lives and stuff like that, and do all that y'all do for them, okay? So I think we wanna do the meet, and we'll probably meet outside, and then I can interview maybe y'all a little bit, so, alright? They didn't come back. Come back. Don't leave.
Alright, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you all.
I just have to know, they said 490, but the teachers actually got $590. So they got an extra 100 for supplies.
We'll take them up if they need it. Sir, sir, I was wanting to know, is there any other community that got four out of the 20?
No, we actually had, Elgin did have one. So we went to Elgin this morning. So actually, five teachers here.
In this area. That's really incredible.
In this county.
In this county.
Pretty cool.
And none other than Oklahoma?
No other.
That means you all did a good job of getting the news out, so our teachers.
That's very good.
And we always know Walmart, you know, it does begin as a teacher, but just when they get pretty quiet. So it's just amazing that all the communities are working together.
It's cool. Very nice. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a reminder for everybody, out of 20 in the entire nation, four from LPS. That's awesome.
That's right.
That is awesome.
Unbelievable. Very nice.
Good. Under...
Your freedom.
Alright, under item B, we have Freedom Elementary, the 2016 Gold National Healthy Schools Award. We came to the realization that Freedom, we've never had them come explain at the board meeting, so this is a tremendous honor, and it's a tremendous accomplishment. And once I brought donuts, and I got into, I got a little bit of trouble, but I also had a couple happy teachers too. So I know not to bring donuts anymore, but anyways, if I could have Ms. Shanklin and her staff come up and explain to us, explain to the board what this means.
Well, thank you for inviting us. Brenda Ragland Spencer's gonna go first?
Alright, so I think I've been here before and talked to you about the challenge that we have in the local community with obesity, especially with our youth. And how we Fort Sill were selected as this pilot site for the Secretary of Defense program. It's called the Healthy Base Initiative. So Fort Sill was a pilot site, so what Freedom Elementary has been doing has been going on for about three years now, and so it's been a process. So I got a couple slides here. So bottom line is, the goal of the Healthy Base Initiative was to improve the health and the well-being of all soldiers and their family members. Specifically, create an awareness at an early age, create an awareness with our youth. So next slide here. So what we learned is, when we look at our, when we look at our military, we also see within our children, and they are a transit community because they're moving around. They're moving from neighborhoods to neighborhoods, schools to schools, installation states. So what we wanted to do was capture some data, but we had about 38% of our children that were struggling with obesity. Well, that has an impact, and it was really predominant within our fourth graders. That was something that we saw here in the state of Oklahoma as well, and also in the southwest Oklahoma community. So I know, Dr. Diggan, you're a part of the Fit Kids Coalition, you've been a member of that, you know the challenges that we're facing. But again, wanting to create some awareness and change the behaviors that our children are focused on, we took the HBI initiative, the Healthy Base Initiative. There's about 19 overall initiatives that we on Fort Sill implemented. One specifically involved our schools. We sent out a request to all of our school districts and said, "Would you like to be a part of the Alliance for Healthier Generation?" Again, about creating awareness, changing the behavior, and eventually, after we focus on health, changing a culture. So we become that community that shows that we are committed to the children, both in our academics, but also within our health that's costing us so much as a nation. So Freedom Elementary came on. What we have found out, this is just some experience, that once we, once we changed the food environment, which is part of that Alliance for Healthier Generation, and also doing some things, educating, healthy dining, what that looks like, not just with our soldiers, but with our families. And many of you probably know, or recall, can recall, you started wearing seat belts. Because your children said, "Dad, put on that seat belt. Mom, put on that seat belt." Remember that? Well, that's the same thing that we believe, and we've proven, that that also happens within the diet. So if we can get the kids to be an advocate, our children to be an advocate, we'll see change behavior throughout. So part of the alliance is, again, activity, things such as recess before lunch. Sarah's gonna talk about that. But I was really proud of Freedom Elementary, because we went out to 17 school districts. Freedom was the one. And the compliments here really go to Michael Shanklin and Sarah Breeze. Because they were the ones that stood up in 2013 and said, "Hey Brenda, we wanna take this on. What can you do to support us? We're gonna go for this." They went bronze, silver, to gold. They followed a process that allowed them to truly create a change that's sustainable within the school. So, again, part of the lessons that we learned through many of the initiatives that we took is through the Alliance for Healthier Generation. It works. Kids get excited. We see changes, not only in the academic performance of the children, but the behavior. We also see changes that are transferable into their home life. So we're very proud of that. Now, what that means for Fort Sill is, we are now a healthy Army community. General Halverson said, "We are gonna take this one step further. We're gonna become a healthy Army community." So under Colonel Curtis and myself, we will continue to implement changes within our environment to promote healthy living. And we just hope, and we're very pleased that Lawton Public School has been a supporter, and we hope that continues. And we're very proud of what Sarah and Michael have brought to our community here. They stand as a model, not just for our district, but that was the school recognized by the state, and it is the one that's recognized. We were the only healthy Army community site, Healthy Base Initiative, that was able to achieve the gold level standard. So thank you to these two ladies, because they are the stalwarts here.
Hi, I'm Sarah Breeze. I was the PE teacher at Geronimo Road, and I was also the PE teacher at Freedom Elementary when it opened. We started at the bronze level when Brenda approached us, and let me just say, we could not have done this with number one, without a supportive administration, a supportive staff, Fort Sill, I mean, anything we went to them, they were behind us. A supportive PTA, Jay Hunt with Youth Services, Lawton Public Schools Wellness Council to adopt policies, the Nutrition Services, Pat Henry, they're kinda like our battle buddy. We bounce ideas off them, and Fit Kids of Southwest Oklahoma and TSET. So, from bronze to silver to gold. Bronze really wasn't that difficult. We have three parties, Halloween, Valentine's, and Christmas. One of those had to be a healthy party. The other ones were, you had to adopt a school wellness council, fish was on the menu once a week, and at least three different fresh food and vegetable options each week, plus 90 minutes of physical education. That one was pretty simple. You move on to silver, and you have to go to 120 minutes of PE. Plus, in that year, no more cupcakes and cookies. That was our biggest challenge. Anything brought into our school, sold, served, anything had to meet the USDA Smart Snacks in School Guidelines. Even a health promotion for staff. Your staff had to get on board that year. Not fully, this wasn't the year that no donuts were allowed, but it was a start. Then gold, it went to 150 minutes a week. And especially a school at our size, when we have three rotations between music, computers, and PE. My coworkers, the music and computer teachers were awesome. They combined classes, they pretty much became PE teachers in their classes as well to get those 150 minutes. Plus, we had to guarantee, this was a policy change, that 10 minutes for breakfast, 20 minutes for lunch, and that had to be placed in policy. Also, that teachers could not withhold recess from children as a punishment. Fundraisers at school for silver, it was during school. Now, all fundraisers. And they say the school day is from midnight until 30 minutes afterwards. This is all fundraiser. So if we have a Monster Mash dance, everything that those PTA members sold, whether it was hot dogs, it had to meet the guidelines. Gold is where the faculty and staff came in. The Coke machine left. It was a sad, sad day. Showers, faculty meetings, I know that we had some representatives come into our school. We had to give them Greek yogurt and fruit. Everything had to go. So also, we had to become farmers. I don't have a very good green thumb. So I pulled in all my resources. They also didn't want us to dig up the freshly-laid sod at Freedom. So, once again, Fort Sill came in and bought us garden towers. So we had three of those. And kids got to try all types of lettuce, peppers, tomatoes, anything you could think of. There's the hop sports you see that Fort Sill brought in once a month. It was great. Snacks then, those Shasta Pops, they made me more money than anything, because I could charge a dollar for them, and they were only 25 cents. But snacks now. Parents got very creative, and kids were excited to make their little fruit parfaits. Those are string cheeses that look like ghosts. So it was very creative. And then there's the Coke machine. It was a sad, sad day. But now, it used to be the kids would get on to us. "Oh my gosh, you're not healthy fit." Now, it's the parents. The parents know. I received an email the other day that says, "Mrs. Breeze, my child came home with fudge brownie mini muffins. They do not meet the guidelines," and it was so hard for me to say, "You are absolutely right. I am so sorry, but I did that." So now the parents are watching, and the parents are grateful. So it was pretty awesome to see. People were worried that our sales would go down. That first year in '13 and '14, they did go down a little bit, because we only sold two things, popcorn and pickle. Then the next year, we got creative, and now our sales keep going up. Here's fitness activities that teachers do in the classrooms. They've really become creative. Here's our fundraisers. They changed from, you know, candy grams to now we have spirit sticks. And then kids take pride in it. They were allowed to create or taste test for breakfast. So most of them are eating breakfast now, and you saw that slide earlier. But here's just some quotes from our teachers. "I love how the kids are not full of sugar during parties. The kids love healthy snacks. It is the parents that have a hard time. To kids, a snack is a snack. My students are alert and focused all day long. I take my kids out daily and use fitness breaks to get the wiggles out. And we can't have parties in the morning. They will be too sugared up. Oh wait, we are healthy fit. I can have a party anytime." Thank you.
I'm gonna say that the transition was not an easy one. Parents were the first issue with bronze, and then the teachers were the second issue as we moved on to silver and gold. However, when we moved and combined into the one school, it was the staff from Sheridan Road that we had to convince to go to silver, because they had not previously participated in the bronze program. So we had a lot of work ahead of us, and we were very successful, but Sarah tries to give me the credit, but the credit really goes to Sarah and Brenda, because without Fort Sill, we could not have had our garden. We couldn't have had some of the other activities that were mandated by the Healthy Fit to accomplish the gold. So we really had a great working relationship with Fort Sill, and I don't wanna leave out Sadekso, because when it came time to add the fish, I mean, by golly, he added that fish, and he worked with us, and he changed our menu so that we would meet that Healthy Fit. So, you know, I'd just like to challenge everyone to try to go this route, because it's, we've paved the way. We've made policy changes with our wellness committee. Sarah and I both serve on the Wellness Committee with Lawton Public Schools. And our PTA came on board, and that first year, those ladies, I don't know how many different popcons they tried, but they tried until they got that popcorn to meet the Healthy Fit guidelines. They did not give up, and they were an awesome bunch of moms, and so I'm just real proud to be a part of that, and I know Sarah is too, and Brenda. So we just wanted to share and let you know that it's been a great adventure for us. Thank you.
Ms. Shanklin, did you just go to Washington, or are you going soon?
No, just got back.
Just got back. They were honored at Washington, and Ms. Breeze is now an assistant principal at Freedom Elementary. You can ask them.
She said y'all don't take recess away from the children as punishment. What do y'all do instead? That might be interesting for other schools to know. There you go. That's nice. Good.
We were at Geronimo Road, so I had a big playground was where they started the school, and so we had a half-mile mess out. And so the children walked. The first two, everybody walked, the first two laps before they played. Everybody goes outside. Now they walk the bus loop.
Very good. I mean, yeah, I like that.
Thank y'all very much. For item C, we have the Professional Educator Association of Lawton. It's Peel, and I've asked Ms. Arlene Cudd. She is, Ruby Peters was our previous Peel representative, and Ms. Cudd has come on board, and we haven't had a chance to introduce her to the board yet. She's been attending board meetings for quite a while. She's pretty quiet, but I understand when she gets the microphone, you gotta watch out, so.
I try to be well behaved. Just a little bit about my background. I am a native Lawtonian. Sometimes, a lot of people move away. In fact, a lot of my class members of Lawton High did move away, and I stayed. I'm also a native Oklahoman. My grandmother crossed the Red River when she was six and covered wagon, and I thought that was pretty awesome. I forgave her that she came from Texas. The southern accent came from my father, who married my mom. He was in the military, so I had the military background there. And she wasn't gonna leave, so he stayed. And consequently, I stayed, and I've had the wonderful opportunity to go through Lawton Public Schools. I attended Garfield Elementary for six years, which was torn down. I attended Tompkins for three years, and it was torn down, but it was rebuilt. I attended Lawton High School, and it's still standing, so that's good. And I also graduated from Camden University at the age of 20. I was kind of a type A person. I wanted to teach, because I wanted to make a difference in the world. But nowadays, the kids are different. Last year, I was, I teach at Tompkins Middle School, and last year, I was the Will Studies teacher, the history background, and the English teacher. And I always ask my students for bow work. They have to do that the first five minutes, get their brains thinking, "Where do your career goes?" And I only had one student, one girl, say she wanted to be a teacher. And when I grew up, we had a lot of girls that wanted to be teachers. And I said, you know, I've got to thinking about that. And today, I was thinking about my students in my classrooms, and I was thinking that they see teachers as underpaid, that they see us overworked. They also realize that, like you have all alluded to today, that we dig into our own pockets to make school interesting and fun. I bought my set of rocks. As a teacher, I hoard whatever I get, and this was an opportunity. When I was teaching elementary, I always tried to jazz at my room. One of our past objectives was to be acquainted with foreign countries, so when we started... So when we studied about England, we did the English Tea Party. When we did France, we did croissants. When we did Italy, we did the pizza. My classroom was kind of popular for some reason. And so, when I introduced rocks, typically, you would probably send the child that might be driving up the wall, but I sent one child, I said, "I'll send the child down to get it," because it came in the mail. And the secretary was so smart, she said, "You probably need two." And the kids thought it was something to eat. They thought it might have been delivered or whatever. And I heard one of them say, "What'd she get? What'd she get? Rocks! It's nothing but rocks. That's not exciting." Well, they didn't know me. Because then those rocks learned about the hardness and the sharpness. And then I also had to deliver one, "Don't try to break it." Because somehow or another, they found the softest rock and they managed to break it. And after that, I said, "Please be careful with my rocks." They particularly liked the pretty peacock rock, which is the males that give the rocks their colors. But then from that, we went on to, we polished the rocks, we got a rock polisher. And that worked really good for discipline because after a while, they kept saying, "Just move it out of the room, it makes too much noise." So I moved it to the faculty lounge and then they complained. And then I moved it home and then the relatives complained, it made too much noise. But anyway, I found that's the way to keep everybody really quiet and say, "If you don't get quiet, I'm returning the rock polisher to the classroom." But the point of the matter is, it took money to get the students enthused. And unfortunately now, we need to be competitive now, to compete with Texas. Because otherwise, the Cameron College graduates, they're allowed to go there because they make more money. And I didn't really realize how bad that was until a couple of weeks ago when I had an opportunity to meet a music teacher in Texas. And I was kind of surprised. First of all, he was moonlighting as a bus driver. And he said he taught 17 years and he was making $8,000 more than what I was making. And this, as I said, is, may not have said, I taught 18 years for Lawton Public Schools as an elementary teacher. Wonderful memories. This is the start of my 11th year in middle school. And so that puts me, you know, so many more years down the road. He also said when he retired, he was going to make $3,000 a month. And I thought, hmm. And then the kicker was, he said, "My health insurance will be paid for when I retire." And in Oklahoma, when you retire, you are paying for your own health insurance. They do give you $100 off when you retire. And I thought, this is going to be really hard to keep our good teachers in Oklahoma. And as a native Oklahoman, I want us to have the very best teachers. We would not be content to be at the very bottom of football, so we shouldn't be content to be at the very bottom of salaries. And we have before us now a House Bill 779. And I'm inviting everybody, even my board members, to come out and walk and encourage people to vote. And also, somebody brought it up to me today, "Well, you know, this may be hard for some people. It's going to be a little bit more of a sales tax." And that's true. But if I make more money, I'm going to spend it here. This was brought home by a family member who decided when we were newly rented that he would order something from the internet. And he ordered it and I put it on and he made this wonderful comment, "You looked that way on the model." And he said, "Yep, I'm sorry there." Of course, I think he kind of learned that was a mistake to say, "Gosh, you look awful at it. You're a little bit late." But it has mattered over the years. But I've heard so many teachers say that because everything is going up so much, they don't have the discretion or income. And I know the city council is concerned about, you know, tax revenues being flat or equal or not going up. But I know personally, when my house insurance doubled and the cost of food, even though I buy a lot from law, I'm trying to be busy. Paycheck doesn't stretch as far as it used to. And maybe it's just me, but I do buy local. I bought my cars here, naturally, my house is here, I'm not commuting to some local town. And I think the money will come back to us. As well as, we really do want to be competitive. We do not want just somebody that, "Well, maybe I'll go into education because I have three months off." We want the people that are dedicated. And every day, I'm still excited about trying to be the best and trying to challenge the students to be the best too, because education really is their way out. If you work hard enough and you start a goal, you can achieve it. And you need that background in education and you need those teachers that are dedicated. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
For item D, we have the Students' Technology Leaders and Ms. Curtis will come introduce our guests.
Now these guys, I am so excited to introduce. You guys can come closer. This is a group that I truly adore, love and am passionate about because, where are their sponsors? Mrs. Treadwell and Mrs. Weeks. These are our Student Technology Leaders. And a little background on that is, when I came here, we had a leadership project. And part of our leadership project was to find something that would make our district better. Well, I came from the classroom and after many conversations with Zeldon Rice and Arthur, there was a problem with work orders and timeliness and trying to get the classroom prepared so that the teachers could teach and the students could learn. One of those were technology needs. So based on our conversation, we decided to come up with a Student Technology Leader Program where these fine young gentlemen and women are the onsite techs, basically meeting our career goals of creating career-bound citizens. And so, prior to them becoming a Student Technology Leader, they have to go through a recommendation from teachers, an interview process, and then they spend their own time to train with Zeldon, AJ Watson, myself. We take them to the school, Ms. Treadwell and Ms. Weeks are there. And we show them the ropes and what they're allowed to do, where they're allowed to go and how they can be suited for their onsite techs. And so they can take care of what our techs would do if they were called out. Now we don't have to wait for them because these guys take care of it for us. So, I want to let Curtis introduce his staff. Oh, we started at Eisenhower this year, but it started last year with Lawton High. That was our pilot program. We did well with four techs and we've expanded to Lawton High and Eisenhower, all hours covered. So there's a tech in every hour for our schools. So I'll let Curtis introduce the Eisenhower techs and then Naomi from Lawton High.
Hello, my name is Curtis Myers and I'm one of the five student techs at Eisenhower High School. And I would just like to go ahead and introduce my fellow colleagues. We have Shakela Love, Chris Smith, who had a conflict so he wasn't able to be here today, Joseph Williams and Blaze Manuel. And yeah, we're having a lot of fun being a student tech and helping out teachers and making it easier for them every day. Thank you.
So what's the process at the school? Like if you have a student at Eisenhower High School? Do you apply or?
Well, when I was chosen, they sent a letter to me and I had to go and audition. Lynn Cordes was one of the people who were auditioning me. And they just had a few questions and stuff that were certifying us essentially, to make sure that we were qualified.
All right. What are some of the issues that you face, that you work on?
Mostly it's, teachers are just having issues connecting with the internet or they need to send something. I know that a lot of my time is when the servers go down in a lab, I just go in there and I'm resetting the computers and making sure that they're running all right.
Do you have like a hotline to Zeldon Rice in case it's a bigger issue?
Essentially, essentially, we just have a tech line that we can just get online access with the techs here at the Schumacher Center.
That's great. So you enjoy it?
Naomi, she's from Lawton High. She's the only one about to come tonight because of mine and work in the evening. So Naomi, she's been with us two years, so she's done this for two years. The first year that we did it, the new phone system came out, so we were bombarded with phone issues. And Naomi ran out of the building for me and took care of things for me. This year, we've done ammo installing, setting up those screens. We talked to Scott a lot via the help line. But I wanted, Naomi, she's wonderful. Like I said, this is her second year with me. She's a junior, so I have an opportunity, possibly she has the credit that she could actually be working a third year. Do you want to say anything?
I'm Naomi. I'm one of the first, like the pilots. And I've enjoyed my years being a tech. It's taught me a lot of things. It's taught a lot of communication skills though. And I love it. And that's what I wanted to say.
Is technology class that hour or are they in a regular class?
Well...
Or library and...
Right now, they're considered library A or an A, student teacher A. And I also have library As at that time, but they have a different job. But we're actually in the process of trying to get it classified as a class. I actually do have one student, he's wanting to opt not having, opting out so that he could stay in the class. He loves the class and I really want him to have that full 100% high school diploma. And so we're working on that right now to get it classified as a technology class. They learn a lot. I teach them everything, like today, Naomi helped me with Kindles. We're having some issues with Kindles. They came out and solved the problem, but there was some series of things that we had to do to the Kindles. Some which I could only do because it had passwords. So I would do my part and then we would do the assembly line. They would do their part and then come back to me and I would finish up and take, you know, things off that didn't need to be accessed by students. So it's really helped. It took a two-day project, turned into one day. We got it done and so we're ready to go tomorrow for the counselors. They need them tomorrow. It's been wonderful. They're learning more and more and more. The first year, kind of hesitant a little bit, you know, let's start small and then build up. This year, I have them putting technology together. If they have a problem with it, they come back, say, "Hey, Mrs. Weeks, couldn't take the problem." Then I usually try to peek in there and see what the problem is. They fill out a work order system and then they put in there whether it was resolved or whether it was on hold or whether I was going to refer to a tech. They know how to contact Scott on the help line and they can say, "Hey..." I always tell them, "Introduce yourself as Student Technology Leader and say, 'I need this software installed' or 'We're having problems with this.'" So the teacher continues to teach. I can continue to do my, whatever I'm doing at the moment, whether it's teaching or helping somebody else with something. And the student can sit there and man that computer. So it really has helped, I think, a lot of the teachers. And our work orders have decreased tremendously. And they've even said, every time I call, you know, we really see a decrease. What I do, if it's lagged and I don't have a lot of teachers that come up to me and say anything to me, I go on a work order system and say, "Okay, what work orders can my kids do?" I'll send them out. If they can fix it, then I cancel that work order. I put a note on it, we took care of it and we cancel the work order. So that's one less person has come out to the building to take care of something. So it's a really good life skill. And Naomi's really come out of her shell. At first she was a little shy, now she gets right in there. So it's a really good program.
Thank you.
We, over at Eisenhower, in order to help us keep the flow, when we're going out and helping out the techs, they gave us a little identification card that kind of separates us and lets the assistant principals and other people that are on the hallways let them know that we're allowed to be out at that time. So, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
And, you know, next year, we have the AIM Bill, we're going to progress, we can actually be able to give you credit. One of two ways. Ms. Curtis is working on it, but also we have another option. So you all have kind of blazed the trail for everybody else. We appreciate it. Thank you. Any questions?
Curtis had one more to hand out.
We, also, in order to keep track of the work that we have done, we also have a work order system that we go through in order to submit the work that we've completed and whatnot and just to let them know where we're at, what we need help with and just what we've accomplished that day.
All right. Thank you all. I know, now, if you all want to hang out for the board meeting, you may, but otherwise, you're free to go also. Thank you all very much.
Just leave your numbers so we can call you if you have any questions.
Do you have any architecture report? Not today. Departmental report? Nope. Now to your report.
I'm with item A, the superintendent. Each year, I present the accreditation report, the information item, 2016-17 District Accreditation Status Report. And if you'll notice as looking at it, the number one question is, we had some deficiencies in some areas and the answer that every day of all of them hadn't been addressed for this year. We had some deficiencies for some coaches that didn't have their care and prevention courses. We have just gone through that process. Everybody has them this year. It was kind of like the defibrillators two years ago. Every year, they kind of focus on different things and immediately, we got the defibrillators. So as of today, everything has been addressed and we are completely caught up and won't see these things next year, that's for sure. Any questions on any specific sites or process?
How long is the probation period?
It depends on what it actually is. Do you know which site you're looking at?
Oh, I just meant in general.
I saw Central Middle School.
Central Middle School, I think they're on probation for entirely different reason. Theirs is, because they're a designation site. And I don't, if everybody remembers, last year, we kind of did a presentation. They are, because of one subgroup of students, a very small subgroup of students, we hope that this pattern changes once ESSA becomes inactive, but under no child left behind. A single subgroup of students, a very small percentage, and I can't remember the exact percentage of the population, can put a school on the probation status. But again, it's the same subgroup as it was the year before. Staff is working very hard on it. But again, it's been a challenge. We hope that with the ESSA, the rules are a little more reasonable as we move forward. Any more questions on item A? On item B, just some quick comments. Our annual, our biannual, twice a year, Bond Oversight Committee meeting will be prior to the next board meeting in November. A few things on there you might notice, Eisenhower High School is wrapping up and playgrounds are starting to, we approved playgrounds, so those things are coming up. The architect has handed me a certificate of substantial completion for Freedom Elementary. What I've done is I've asked Ms. Shanklin to get her staff together and identify any possible issues anywhere in the building that we need to have addressed before we'll bring that to the board and have it signed. So we're going to have a meeting and a walkthrough with her staff to make sure there's absolutely nothing missing in addition to any items that we're already aware about.
On that note, how do we address an issue? I was part of an issue where a heater ran all day in the hall over there and they couldn't manage to get it shut off. How do we handle something like that?
Well, that's something I'm talking to Ms. Shanklin about. Yeah. Anytime something like that for speed, if you just have them refer to me, I can get somebody out there.
Well, I mean, it was just something that said.
Yeah. But we're going to do a walkthrough with her staff to make sure there's absolutely nothing. And it was a different bond, but it falls under this, so a different bond. Actually, Sales Tech funded that. Any other questions on item B? And then item C, I just have a quick few announcements. Lawton Fort Sil, I believe the fourth year in a row was chosen to be focused at one of the governors' summits. There've been STEM summits and work summits on Lawton Public Schools. And Lawton Fort Sil was the only community chosen to be focused on in the main summit. Also, if you haven't read the newspapers, this is a huge deal, the McMahon Foundation. This was completely spontaneous, nobody asked them. They spontaneously voted to give Lawton Public School teachers, each one of them, just like this board did with the $100, but now $250 for each certified classroom teacher from the McMahon Foundation. That is a huge, huge deal. We had them out to the staff meeting here at 4:00 today with the admin team and rightly so, they got a standing ovation. And then, of course, just a reminder of the 1,000 for One campaign with the PTA. The goal is to get 1,000 volunteers into our schools and I think they're going to have that licked pretty quickly. And then finally, just one quick reminder, of course, board members are invited to this, we have the Live to Lead Pre-Conference, which is Wednesday afternoon from 1:30 to 3:30. You're invited and we have a separate pre-conference next Monday, which Rotary has identified just for faith leaders. And so that's set, next Monday, both of them are at Cameron University from 1:30 to 3:00. So that concludes my report.
I'd like to thank McMahon Foundation for a very generous gift.
Amazing.
It's an amazing thing and the teachers so deserve that support.
They get $350 this year because of what the board and McMahon did together. They get $350 this year because of what the board and McMahon did together.
It's fantastic.
Amazing.
Does anyone need any remove from the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Call the board, please.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Sherem?
Yes.
And no executive session for this evening?
Nope. I see no need for one.
Okay, then on to your personal report.
Under item 13, we have the superintendent's personnel report. It's item A, vote to approve the employing, promoting, disciplining and receiving resignations of individuals certified and support salary personnel listed on pages 131 through 134.
One item that's.
We haven't come to new business yet. Consideration and business next.
It's item 14. We're on item 13.
I got too carried away about that.
Yeah.
I didn't want to, didn't want to forget A.J.
We won't forget you.
I make a motion for a table?
Second.
Call the board, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Sherem?
Yes.
Under item 14, we very rarely have new businesses aboard, but today, we have two. So I think they're very, I asked Mr. Wade. The first one we'll have, I'll have the city of Lawton. A.J., correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, A.J., approach, if you have any questions. What this is, is an agreement. I read Mr. Wade reviewed this. It wasn't ready till today. What it is, is the city of Lawton and their efforts, I don't remember, Mr. Fitch, Mayor Fitch had set one of the goals is to look into the future. If we have another drought, to identify additional water sources. This simply is an agreement which would allow the city of Lawton to drill a test well right near our bus barn and on that little group of area of land there. I don't see any concerns, Mr. Wade doesn't see any concerns. And they have the equipment here and so we didn't want to wait till the next board meeting. They're ready to go and I think it would be a good show of heart to allow them to drill their test well on our property. What I understand is if there are any other concerns, they'd come to us with, you know, if they needed to actually buy a right of way or anything like that. But at this point, it's just a test well. Is that a pretty good explanation of it?
I don't know if you noticed, our drillers around town, they have built nine test holes. And one of them is at Elmer Thomas Park, very close to here. And at the time, when they're doing the drilling, they probably use about 8,000, 10,000 square feet because of their equipment. But the test well itself is not bigger than this table. And if we see that it meets our requirement, we come back with a request for ISMAN or buy land or whichever way that you are agreeable. And if you do not, if we do not find what we want, we will block the well, the hole, sorry, a bank in that deep place in accordance with Oklahoma Water Resources regulations.
So I do, again, apologize for new business, but I think this is a, we don't want to hold the city up. And we, our city founders were visionary when they bought Elmer, when they bought the different lakes in the area. This is another step. If we have another drought, we needed all the water we can. So I do recommend that the board approve it. Mr. Wade reviewed it and didn't have any concerns, so.
I commend the city, the engineering staff in particular, with the way they've handled this. A.J. gave me an initial draft and we turned around it from Friday to the final draft today. It's just a, as you said, just a test well, but you never know. And we need to look for any resources, any sources we can find for water. We need to try to see, or try to identify. So that's all they're trying to do.
Call the board, please.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Mr. Sherem?
Yes.
And the second item, new business. This has to do, each year, and thank you, A.J., very much for coming. Each year, the state has an Association of Student Council State Convention that meets this year. They moved it to Guyman and the sponsors didn't realize until today that that was outside of our normal 250-mile radius. It's 291 miles, which requires board approval. Again, this is our student councils. It involves all three high schools. Same essential trip they do every year. This is just to a new place. It's possible that some students will have to stay in Liberal, Kansas, which is about, you know, 45 minutes away. But again, I appreciate if the board would consider approving this so our students can go on that trip.
And will they get to use one of our vans? They want to be able to use one, will that be possible?
I don't, I don't see. I think we're thinking about the little mini, I'm not sure, whatever.
The little ones, that's what they're called, the little small ones.
Will they be able to do that?
Yeah, transportation will work that out with them. Unless there's a prior commitment, I'm sure there won't be any problems, but.
I make a motion with.
I second.
Call the board, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Mr. Sherem?
Yes.
That concludes all new business?
Yes.
Next regular board meeting is scheduled Monday, November 7th here at Shoemaker at 5:00 P.M. Any other action concerning setting boarding meeting dates?
None that I can see.
Any board announcements? 18, consideration of motion to adjourn.
I'd like to motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Call the board, please.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherem?
Yes.